Okay, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Oh, here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner-Feesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Now stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. We need to approve the agenda. And Ms. Hatfield, did you have changes to two of the exhibits?
I did, please. I have two revisions. One on Item 11D, Exhibit 8, 4. The donation should reflect $72,000. And then on Treasure Action Item 11E, for the advanced refunding of bonds, the amount should reflect $80,020,000.
Okay. We have approval of the agenda with those changes.
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
I apologize. Was that Mrs. Patrick?
It was.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner-Feesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have two presentations. And the first one is on the Professional Learning Plan, and it's Vince DiTillio. Vince, want to come on up? You've got some slides and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay.
Yay!
So, good evening. My name's Vince DiTillio. I'm the Assistant Director of Professional Learning. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the community for giving me the chance to share a snapshot of professional learning within our district. We strongly believe that high-quality professional learning opportunities for our staff play an integral role in the success of our students, our schools, and our district. So before diving in and sharing our professional learning focus for this school year, I would like to take a step back and share the process through which we identify and execute our district-wide professional learning focus. Like all of our planning, we begin with the mission statement to facilitate maximum learning for every student. It's our ultimate goal and our guiding light. We also make sure that we consult our strategic plan, which helps break down the mission statement into four broad components, each with more specific goals that aid our planning. We study our portrait of a learner. It reminds us of the skills and dispositions we believe are key to success in the classroom and beyond. And finally, the Olentangy Foundations provide us with a framework for designing and executing quality learning experiences. When combined and studied, this set of documents supports our efforts to create a professional learning focus that is both relevant and aligned to these goals. The focus for the upcoming year is developed in March through ongoing collaboration with administration and instructional leaders throughout the district and the buildings. Our district-wide focus typically takes the form of a broad, general concept. This is intentional in that it seeks to frame the learning for all teachers regardless of the content they teach or the grade levels that they teach. The focus acts as the shared through line of our journey throughout the year. Myself, along with other central office administrators and the PD teams from each building, develop, plan, and facilitate learning opportunities on the mornings of the three PD days that align to this focus. The afternoons of those days are directed by the building and focused on content-specific professional learning within each academic discipline. So, four years ago, we began a new cycle of professional learning that was focused on exploring the components of maximized meaningful learning opportunities. In studying our most successful teachers, we immediately noticed that they were content experts with sound instructional practices. But as we dove deeper, we also began to notice how these expert teachers intentionally created a classroom culture with certain conditions that made success for every student more likely. Students' learning in these classrooms achieved more, but also developed a set of skills that would serve them beyond the school day. Our learning focus over these last four years has taken a closer look at each of these conditions in hopes of truly facilitating maximum learning for every student. We started with relationships and interactions. They are the most basic component of teaching and learning in the classroom. Relationships and interactions have a significant impact on motivation and achievement. In 2018-2019 school year, we explored techniques for fostering deep and productive relationships with our students and how we might facilitate the same interactions between peers in the classroom. In 2019 and '20 school year, we chose to look inward. We know that classrooms where students regularly practice reflection, goal-setting, self-regulation produce more independent learners who have a deeper understanding of what they do and do not know. When students are equipped to manage their thinking, behavior, and emotions, they can more easily overcome adversity and monitor their own progress towards goals. Having looked both outward through relationships and inward through self-regulation, we arrived at the focus of a sense of belonging for the 2021 school year by thinking about how these aspects interact and coexist in the classroom. Our most successful teachers foster a sense of belonging simply by developing a community in their classroom. They embrace their students' unique backgrounds, interests, skills. They make intentional decisions to provide equal access to all learners and all students. They foster connections between students through collaboration and shared goal-setting. In the classroom, a sense of belonging looks like a network of individuals that learn both with and through each other. So this year, we plan to explore how teachers might leverage their sense of belonging they have created to position students as more active participants in their own learning. When students acquire agency, they become more engaged, more self-directed, more passionate about their learning. Learners with agency develop a deeper understanding of the content, but also an eagerness to learn that will serve them in their career beyond Olentangy. So agency can generally be described as positioning students in a more active role in the process of learning. As a concept, agency is closely tied to other ideas such as motivation, self-regulation, self-management, and personalized learning. This year, our teachers will use agency as a frame of reference for their discussions centered on the following components. First, learner agency is activated when students think, learn, and create alongside their classmates. Learning with and through others increases motivation and collaborative skills. Second, agency develops as students begin to understand themselves as learners. Self-aware students are able to set their own goals, develop plans of action to achieve them, and deal with adversity along the way. Third, agency grows as students find opportunities to voice their opinions and provide feedback. They feel empowered to speak up, ask questions, and make suggestions that will ultimately have a positive impact on their own learning and that of their peers. Lastly, agency is nurtured when learners are provided with meaningful choices that impact their own learning. Student choice, whether small or large, engages learners in actively determining the course of action. So, to give you a little bit of a clearer picture, detailed picture of what agency is, I posted just two common examples from classrooms across our district. There's many examples of this, but just chose a few that stand out to me as examples. The first is a Wonder Wall, which is a common practice for activating students' natural curiosity about content. It prompts them to ask their own questions and drive their own learning. Teachers can use the questions on a Wonder Wall to assess the prior knowledge about a topic, use students' questions as a relevant hook into the learning, or even provide students with time to complete their own research projects around these questions. Again, just an example of how it positions students in an active role in the learning as an active participant. The second example showcases learner agency in the form of self-reflection and goal-setting. This student has reflected on their performance and identified actionable steps forward to positively impact their learning. Because the action steps are created by the learner, they're more likely to adhere to them. Reflection and goal-setting invites the learner into the process and gives them the opportunity to take responsibility for their own growth. So with that, this concludes my presentation tonight. I'd like to say thank you again to the Board and to the community for providing me with this time to explain the process for developing professional learning, the history of our current learning cycle, and a bit more detail about where we are headed this year. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
No question.
Go ahead.
Well, I was privileged to attend Olentangy Elevate this year, and our guest, our keynote speaker, besides Dr. Fetti, the gentleman from Dublin, the art instructor...
Yeah, Jason Blair.
Yeah, he was fantastic in trying to help teachers understand what student agency is. And in my attendance of that, I got to learn that it's already being done in some places. And just a special shout-out to teachers that have already figured that out, and I hope they mentor their fellow teachers. I personally would love to thank John Sandsbury for his role over at Liberty High School because he's achieved that, as well as many others. But there was a particular course called Positive Leadership where he was able to really engage the students. They worked as teams, kind of broke down social barriers, and great example of that work already being done. I look forward to more of it in the future.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, it's a broad concept with lots of different entry points, so many, especially, I mean, many elementary teachers, you know, have places for choice and voice in their classroom and in the secondary level collaborative learning. There's lots of entry points for it. And again, it's designed for all teachers, content level, you know, grade levels, and even our intervention staff, other folks. So we keep it broad intentionally when we're doing the district PD, which is in the mornings of those three PD days, and then the afternoons are directed by the buildings and the departments, the academic content.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeff Gordon, and he's going to update us on all of the work that was done to the buildings over the summer.
In the asphalt.
In the asphalt.
Have you seen the bumps at Liberty High? Elementary Solomon, I knew that.
Ohio? Can you do a little bus lane?
Yeah, just south.
Hi, Jeff. Happy to be here to report. We talked earlier on the big projects, the opening of Shell Meadows, and of course, the start of Middle School 6. These are some of the other things that we were able to get accomplished this summer with the community's support, passing the bond and being able to bring those items that we had on the bond issue that was passed in 2020 back to the community. So we wanted to highlight some of these projects that we were able to work on. So, the first was the security vestibules and at three high schools, two middle schools, and 11 elementary schools, to be able to get those in and have those ready for the start of school. In addition, the playgrounds. See, here's a picture of our handicap-accessible play structure. We had 15 playgrounds that we renovated the soft surface in and put this structure in, as well as did some work on the others, and had all of those open. There was a small portion of Scioto Ridge, which was the last one that we did not get done until the second day of school, but the big structure was open the first day of school and the majority of the playground there. And we had one additional playground we were adding for some of the skills at the Shanahan Middle School for preschool there. The media center updates. We had three high schools that we worked with the media center specialists to put the high school furniture in. A lot of the high schools and middle schools that already started down a path over the last several years are doing renovations. So we worked with them to give them a budget to continue going down the path that they already went on. And then we replaced carpet in two of those middle schools, and we'll continue that as part of our regular PI process. The elementary media centers was also part of the bond. We already will start planning in September, meeting with the group, to plan those out and do the 15 elementary media center updates next summer. So those will be coming soon, along with the collaboration spaces for the high schools that we're not on this year. Some of the other projects we did just in the buildings, we had new desk units we put in. A lot of these were part of when we put security vestibules in, we changed the approach into the offices. We changed some of the desks and updated carpet and some of those things that made sense to do while we were working on those projects. And the broadcast journalism suites and facility repairs we had at Olentangy High School, Berlin High School, Liberty High School, and these were modeled off of the broadcast journalism suites we had made at Orange High School just a few years ago. So we were able to expand that. This one is Olentangy, a Tangy Today program. We had a partial roof replacement at Liberty High School, which was about $1.1 million, replacing the track at Olentangy High School as well. And then also on the bond was our annual HVAC. So we had a new chiller at Scioto Ridge, Shanahan's main office, and the Oasis classrooms. We were able to update the HVAC in those. The advantage with Shanahan Middle School is when we run the offices in summer, we'd have to turn the whole front of the building on there, and then it was difficult, every office pushing the chiller, pushing out. So we were able to put a separate unit just for that office. When we just have a principal or secretary in the building, we don't have to run the chiller just to condition those spaces. So that had an energy savings advantage, as well as making those offices more comfortable. And then miscellaneous projects throughout the district. At Olentangy High School, we were able to remove a couple of the mounds, put in a patio that they're using for a senior patio, a new bell system there. We did an office conversion of what had been the attendance office at Liberty High School that we moved into the security vestibule. We were able to transform that into a separate conference room. Of course, the bus lane at Hyatt's Middle School was touch-and-go, but we were able to get that in just before school started. And then, of course, our annual asphalt replacements and updates of life safety systems in three buildings. And so some of the nice things or enjoyable things about these projects, we had a student at Scioto Ridge, mom called the principal and said, "My son was so happy to come home from school today," and he said, "It was the best day of his life. He was able to go everywhere in the playground that his friends went," and that he was able to go on the big structure. So hearing those stories, and another principal called me and put a student on at the thanks for the playground at their building as well. So it's nice when we do that. In my role with buildings, I don't always get to see the students as much, so it's nice to hear that feedback on these really, really nice things. So, do you have any questions on the projects?
Any questions for Jeff?
No.
I don't think he has anything left to do. Do you, Jeff?
Well, I actually left a meeting with our architect this afternoon, and we were starting on those collaboration space planning, as well as some other smaller projects in the district. So with him and the other civil engineer, we used one civil engineer, two architects, and another mechanical engineering firm this summer for all of our projects.
Oh, my gosh.
So we're helping out a lot of different firms in the community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Gordon, you are not in charge of any of the road closings, are you?
No.
There is a lot. There is a lot. It was difficult to get over here. I know buses have been running late because of all the railroad crossing updates, but that is not under Mr. Gordon's jurisdiction.
Our roadway's road.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Take this off so I can be heard. Next, we have the Board President's Report. And so before I get started, I want everyone, you all look to your right. And now, I want you to look to your left. And now, I want you to look behind you. And now, I want you to look across the theater, and I want you to wave. Because all of these people are in your community. We're all neighbors. You might see each other's children in your children's classroom. You might see them on the soccer field. You might run into these people at the grocery store or at your church. But we are one community. So while serving as school board members, we all have the duty to ensure the educational welfare of all students. We must make sure that the school buildings are safe for our students and staff. Last year, when the schools were closed by order of the state and the students were forced to learn at home, I had a saying, "No one took a class on how to teach during a pandemic." Likewise, prior to 2020, no school board member was ever trained on how to oversee a school district during a pandemic. We are all learning as we go. I understand that everyone has experienced situations that we never imagined 18 months ago. I understand that these are unprecedented times, and it's causing great stress on everyone. I understand that everyone wants to just get back to normal. I will be the first to admit that I thought as soon as there was a vaccine available and we got through the school year, this coming school year would be normal. June 2nd came, and the state's health orders expired, and I was ready to go and get on with my life. However, as the back-to-school preparations began, COVID numbers started to go back up. The decision was made to follow the guidance of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center of Disease Control, and the Ohio Department of Health to strongly recommend face masks be worn in the buildings regardless of the vaccination status. So, we looked around, and that's what we saw. When that was announced, the school board and administration received numerous emails, phone calls against this decision. The communication expressed everything from disappointment to anger to calling for board members and the superintendent's resignation. When school started a week ago, administrators monitored the mask-wearing, and unfortunately, the number of students wearing masks, especially those in the grades where students were not eligible for the vaccine, were not as high as we had hoped. Next. In order to keep students in the school and out of quarantine, the decision was made to mandate masks in the K through 8, starting Monday, March 23rd. When that announcement was made, the school board again received numerous emails, phone calls, and other communications against this decision. So either decision we made, it was somebody did not like that decision. The communication expressed everything from disappointment to anger to calling for the board members and superintendent's resignation, just like the prior decision. As board members, we render all decisions based on available facts and our own independent judgment, rather than succumbing to the individual's influence or special interest groups. The fact of the matter is, when students and staff members are not wearing masks, they are exposed to somebody, and they are exposed to someone who has tested positive for COVID, we have a better chance of being quarantined than when they are in missing important time in the classroom, rather than when they are wearing masks. This is what everyone is trying to avoid. No decisions were made based on numbers of emails or calls received from either side. In fact, after one week of school, the total impact is 211. That's 188 students, 23 staff members, and 59 positive cases, 44 of which are students, 15 are staff, and 152 are quarantined. 144 students and eight staff members. With two entire classes with a total of 40 students quarantined after two days of school due to exposure and unmasked positive case, we received 409 masked exemption forms, which equals 2.6 times. Let me be clear. Ensuring the students have access to in-person learning is a key priority for the board, and masks are the important prevention strategy to reduce the spread of COVID and help limit the instances of isolation and quarantine. Ohio revised Code 3313.67 authorizes the Board of Education to make and enforce rules to prevent the spread of communicable diseases among the students in attendance or are eligible to attend the schools. I'm sorry that we continue to face the unknown with this pandemic. I'm sorry that the issue to mask or not mask has divided our community. I'm sorry things are not back to normal. However, I am not sorry for acting in the best interest of our students and staff to ensure they can stay safely in our buildings. And finally, act in kindness. Thank you, sir.
Listen up. Check it out. The local meeting, you're disrupting on purpose. Everybody's gonna be warned right now to disrupt the local meeting. That is a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. If we act out of caution again, I will write you a citation. If it persists, somebody will go to jail if I act. Take it away. Okay? That's what's happening. Let them finish what they have to say. Okay? Everybody's going right now to disrupt the local meeting. If this will be over the fourth degree or persists, I will call for you if you can't reach the judge you'd like. Let them finish. When they get to the speaking part, you can speak then, so you can understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let them finish.
However, I am not sorry for acting in the best interest of our students and staff to ensure they can stay safely in our buildings. And finally, act in kindness. There is too much ill will in this world to have our neighbors angry at our neighbors. No one here knows what the future looks like. I keep looking for that crystal ball, and acting out in anger does not accomplish anything, nor does it set a good example for our students. As I continue to say, "Love thy neighbor as thyself, treat others as you wish to be treated, or just be kind." And that is my President's Report. Next, we have a board action item to approve the Olentangy Emergency Powers Resolution, and this extends the emergency powers that we granted last school year for a period of time during the 2021-22 school year and until December 31st, 2021, with automatic rollover through May 31st, 2022, unless the board asks to terminate it and it amends the policy 8450.01, the use of face mask coverings as attached and incorporated for reference. Further resolve that the superintendent is authorized to adopt guidelines and procedures to implement this resolution directed to monitor current guidance and recommendations and requirements from the public health authorities and directed to make adjustments to the mask requirements as deemed necessary. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner-Feesel?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we move on to the superintendent's report.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mrs. Feesel.
Now, we have the treasurer's report. Thank you. Excuse me, please. Thank you. I appreciate your patience and kindness. So this evening, I just wanted to discuss the action items that are on the agenda this evening as per our normal business items that we bring forward. We have our July board financials, our board meeting minutes, amended appropriations for fiscal year 2022, donations, and the advanced refunding for bonds. Some highlights of the board financials for the month of July. We currently have on our supply and materials approximately 8% of the budget that's being spent. But the special note about that is that we have a multi-year renewal for our district-wide subscription of electronic textbooks. That's creating what appears to be an overage. But overall, for the year, we expect that line item to be just fine. It's just a timing for that multi-year contract. As a reminder to the community, the district is still not eligible to receive federal funding provided by SER 2 or SER 3. Should additional expenditures related to the pandemic continue, those costs will be expended to the general fund. At this time, we are incurring additional costs for continued cleaning and sanitary measures that are occurring, and those are being expensed to the general fund. So we'll continue to watch that and let the board know if there is something that seems out of line for the budget. We also wanted to point out Page 2 of the fiscal package. We have monitored the general fund summary to try to provide a more transparent and easy-to-read document. So please take a look at that and let us know if you have further revisions that you would like for that packet. And with that, I will recognize our donations. We have a $1,500 donation from Mark and Lori Huffnagle to Liberty High School Dance Team Club. Just over $2,000 in supplies from Staples to the Olentangy School District. Just over $13,000 for updates to library and a variety of diverse texts from the Liberty Tree PTO to Liberty Tree Elementary. A $7,200 grant for flexible seating, sensory equipment, and equipment for adaptive books from the Beck Foundation to Oak Creek Elementary. from the Beck Foundation to Oak Creek Elementary. Roughly $816 for supplemental coaching from the Olentangie Athletic Boosters to Olentangie Schools. And then approximately $4,000, just over that, from the Liberty Athletic Boosters for supplemental coaching in cross-country tennis and field hockey. We are always grateful for the donations that our community makes, whether that is supplies and materials or cash donations, but also in your time volunteering and in-kind donations. So thank you very much. The advanced refunding that we have on the agenda tonight will be for just over $80 million. An advanced refunding is similar to refunding your home mortgage. We're refunding that to receive a decrease in the interest cost of issuing and holding that debt. So we are expecting to receive about 7% to 8% savings in net present value interest and roughly $7.75 million in current net present value spending. So overall, it's a great time to continue to take advantage of these bond refundings and lower the debt cost for the district. We will receive a ratings from Standard and Coors. We are working with Baker and Tilly Municipal Advisors, Bricker and Eckler for bond counsel. So with that, I will take any questions on those items you may have. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have public participation. Mrs. Hatfield, do you want to explain how we're doing public participation?
Absolutely. So public participation is the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion. It is an opportunity to present ideas or concerns to the board in a public forum. The board will respectfully listen to the comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of 30 minutes. Each participant has a limit of five minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be able to cede their five minutes to another person. Participants must state their full name and address when stepping to the podium. Public participation procedures are established by the Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The policy in its entirety is available on the district website. We have the public participation forms that were collected just at the prior, excuse me, prior to the meeting, and so I will draw one out of the container, one at a time. And that person would please join us at the microphone on the floor. Once you've stated your name and address, it will begin your five-minute segment.
May I have Abe Nixon join us at the microphone, please? Mr. Nixon, if you would please state your name and address, and I will begin your five-minute segment.
You can pick it up. Yeah, it should come off. There you go.
My name's Abe Nixon. I live here in Powell. I want to start off by thanking the teachers first and foremost, because we've all been through a lot. This school year started, and I was really proud of the decision that was made. I was really proud that the school district gave parents the freedom to choose.
Um, do you want to address the board?
Because I think that's the most important thing that could happen. It's been 18 months. We have seen what's happening in the world. We have data and we have actual statistics. I'm holding up a number right now. This number is 79. 79 is the median age of death here in Ohio from COVID. It's not affecting kids. I'm holding up a second number, 0%. If you go on the Ohio Department of Health website, the coronavirus dashboard, and you look at kids under 18, there is a 0% listed likelihood of death from COVID, 0%. Now, I'm reading a study that looked over 103 randomized clinical trials. They narrowed it down to 65. Here's what masks do. Headaches, lethargy, tiredness, hypercapnia, that's high carbon dioxide levels, hypoxia, dangerously low oxygen levels, reduced concentration, which I think is important in school for students, reduced motor skills and coordination, acne, staph infections, other pathogens, anxiety, and depression. We have a depression crisis more than we have a COVID crisis for students. Excuse me, I'm a little passionate about this. This study from May, this study from May of 2021, after we've already been through this for the entire last school year, part of the school year before, it looked at Florida, New York, and Massachusetts. We all know Florida said, "We're done with the masks." Massachusetts and New York took the opposite. Let me read this important line from the summary. "We do not find any correlations with mask mandates." This next study from May 2020, "Non-pharmaceutical Measures for Pandemic Influenza in Non-Healthcare Settings." That would include schools, malls, wherever. Let me read the bottom in the summary. "There is limited evidence for their effectiveness in preventing any type of virus transmission, either worn by the infected person or the uninfected person." They don't work. Getting back to the most important part, I am not against anyone else wearing a mask. But what we have here, according to not only Ohio Constitution, but the United States Constitution, what we have is a violation of parental rights. The interest of parents in the care, custody, and control of their children is perhaps the oldest fundamental liberty interest recognized by the United States Supreme Court. Number three, the violation to the right of bodily integrity and autonomy.
Mr. Nixon, have one minute.
Thank you, I won't use it all. The right to refuse medical treatment. A mask is considered a medical device. To refuse a mask is your right. This right is inherent to every individual. Section 1, Article 1 of the Ohio Constitution ensures that every Ohioan is provided with personal security, bodily integrity, and autonomy. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to comment here, and I hope you'll reconsider and listen to the people who have children in this school district. And I want to go back to where we started, because this is the most important part. There are no 79-year-olds in our schools. 0%, 0%, 0%. Get on the website.
If you would settle down, you could hear me. Mrs. Clemmons, please. Thank you. I will start your time after. If you wouldn't mind, please state your name for the record and your address. And you're addressing the board. If I'm addressing the board? Yeah, you're addressing the board.
Sure, my name's Ashley Clemmons, 4605 Recovery Rock Drive in Powell.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I really appreciate giving up and speaking to all of the statistics. My name's Ashley Clemmons. I have three children within our Olentangie School District. I wanted to be able to provide tonight a little bit of a different viewpoint. I agree with all the statistics. I'm just not much of a statistic talker. I see firsthand things, and that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. My husband and I are owners of two childcare centers here in the Columbus area, where all summer long, all summer, approximately 300 children from the ages of six weeks to 11 years old at my schools went unmasked. Unmasked! Nobody does that, but I do. I don't believe that these children should be masked. I'm sure for those that believe in masks, you're thinking on the devil, imagining the worst. Two, two cases. And do you know what? That case, that first case, came from her mother, who was vaccinated. And only one other of the classmates got it. That's it. Two cases, perfect. Crazy to me. It wasn't rampant, as you may expect. And remember, we have toddlers who like to share their germs. I realize it's summer, warmer weather plays a factor into everything, but I can also tell you, from August of 2020 to May 31st of 2021, where our schoolagers were mandated by ODJFS, who licenses us to wear masks, that we still had more cases of masked children than unmasked children. What does that tell you? The master journey, I mean, his son alone already has strep. He's been masked for four days because I didn't know about the exemption form yet, and I'm going to fill that out clearly. However, he's got strep. Here we go, because he's wearing a nasty mask. He's a seven-year-old. It's disgusting. Anyhow, and I would also like to think that our school agents in our district can wash their hands a little bit better than my preschoolers at my school. They also have access constantly to hand sanitizers, of which my children in my school do not, because they're not allowed to have access to it. Overall, I'm deeply concerned with the short-term and potential long-term negative effects, not only physically, but also emotionally, that these mask mandates are placing on our children. It's just not right. At the end of the day, our children have already had to endure months of abnormal academic experiences. For what? To my knowledge, there's no sound study out there that includes a control group that proves that the masks are actually working. We had basically masks that popped up almost daily. That's with the masks on. With Friday's update to the mask mandate, it just begs the question for me, where does this end? And what is the end game? When will it ever be okay to stop wearing a mask? Because this is not going away, nor other multitude of variants that are going to follow. Just like the flu vaccine, the COVID vaccine will never be able to fully protect anyone that gets it. And I know no one likes to compare the flu to the vaccine, right? But from my firsthand experiences with the symptoms I have seen within my childcare centers.
One minute, Mrs. Clemmons.
It's absolutely no different. And for the majority of children nationwide, it's not either. Please know my heart goes out to any family that has truly lost a child due to this. But I also feel very strongly that it's our responsibility as U.S. citizens and parents to look at the overall picture and realize that for the majority of children with COVID, it's a runny nose, a cough, and maybe a fever for about 24 to 48 hours. Who hasn't gone to the doctor and taken their kid in for a fever, and they say, "Oh, it's a virus, just let it run its course"? What is everyone so afraid of? What are we afraid of? You still see the death? Zero. Zero. We have to put a stop to this. It begins here for me. I promised my children that if they were told they had to wear a mask again, that I would stand up for what I know is right.
Time has expired, please.
Nothing changes overnight, and I realize if the school board and our superintendent do change their stance on masks.
May I have Blazin Archibald, please, join us at the podium, please? Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name and your address for the record?
Sure. Blazin Archibald, 161 Charterhouse Court in Powell.
Thank you. Your five minutes has begun.
All right. So I've got seven children, six of which are in school from first grade all the way to 10th, so I consider myself somewhat of an expert. So I found it rather ironic and actually serendipitous tonight that the development topic was agency. And I fully agree. I think that's a very important point, and that's presumably why a bunch of us are here, including myself, is agency. Mr. Rafe, presumably with the support of the school board, based on the masks I see, made a point, made this decision, and for the sake of time, I'm not going to go point by point, but suffice it to say, the reasons given were rather arbitrary. And I find the timing interesting. So two days, two days after, then all of a sudden, a change. It feels like a classic bait and switch. The problem I have with it is you set up the precedence, and then within 48 hours, you pull the rug out and say, "Oh, and by the way, we're not going to revisit this for nine weeks." It just doesn't seem sincere, and just, I think that's what frustrates a lot of us. So let's just assume that the CDC and the Ohio Health is the guideposts. The guideposts move daily, but let's just say it's those for now. Okay? They've said, let's read what they say and what they recommended, okay? This is from the CDC website. "Students benefit from in-person learning." Okay, I'm paraphrasing here. "Vaccination is the leading public health prevention strategy." Whole section, vaccines are an important indicator. And then it talks about recommending masks, and they go into a whole litany of ventilation, things beyond masks. There's another important point here, though, that we need to focus on. It says, "Localities should monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, et cetera." Okay, so let's just look at the facts. The facts are Delaware County is the most vaccinated county in the state of Ohio. Okay? We didn't see that on the screen, but it's a fact. 65 and up, 92% are vaccinated. 18 and up, 77% of us are vaccinated. So the leading indicator the CDC says we should look at, hopefully we're looking at it. Let's look at deaths. 138 total. Based on the population, as the gentleman showed, it's closer to zero than one for, well, for Delaware County residents, actually. That's 138 total deaths in the county out of a population of 200,000. There's less than nine in the state. In the whole U.S., it's about 400 deaths. Okay, yes, that's tragic, but we need to put it in perspective. That's about half the number that drown every year. That's about nine times less than the average suicide rate. So once again, is COVID the number one issue for children? Look, if masks work, then I'd say that parents shouldn't have a concern then. They should be comfortable sending their child to school with one, two, three, whatever number of masks they want. No, and it's fine. If someone chooses to do that, they have full right, and I'll support it. Just like anything else, I don't expect my kids or anyone else to say something to another child because of what they're wearing or what they decide to do in that manner. All we're saying is just don't force it on everyone else. Once again, let's not even talk efficacy. If they work, then they work, right? If they don't work, then it's nothing more than a charade. So I would say, you know, I'd simply say this. Let's follow the professional training principle and give us our agency. Making masks optional is the path we should go down. It was there, it was pulled out, and this decision to make it nine weeks just doesn't quite seem to add up with everything. Please give us back the choice. Let us decide what's best for our children. Let us decide what's best for our children.
Forgive me, I'm not sure that I can read the last name correctly, but Kristi Miller...
Nun.
Nun? Thank you. My apologies. Thank you for correcting me. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and your five minutes will begin.
Kristi Miller, Nun, 2597 Coaster Trace, Lewis Center. Good evening. Thank you for letting us at least comment on the situation that's going on right now. And I was not planning to talk tonight, but if I have an opinion, a strong one, I can't not talk on behalf of my kid. I'm sorry if I get emotional. It's been a hard year. First, I just wanted to say that I was so proud of our district last year. I thought the way that we handled such an unforeseen circumstance was as good as anybody could have expected or hoped for, so thank you. But the decision even that you made at the start of this school year, I was so proud, I was bragging. I mean, I was running around bragging to all my other friends, like, "Our school district is standing up, and we don't have to mask our kids if we don't want to." And then the rug got pulled out from under us. So I just, I have a few questions, because I'm just trying to understand why this decision was made with no data and seemingly even not a single study that can back it up. And my first concern, I mean, even beyond physical health, is the mental and emotional health and the development of our children. So I'm gonna ask a question specifically for the high schools first, because I have a high schooler, so that's what I've been paying most attention to. If a child is unvaccinated and chooses not to wear a mask in high school, and they are within three feet of a child that tests positive, they are sent home for 10 days. I hope I'm correct in my understanding of that. As a high schooler, being sent home for 10 days can be devastating academically. So I don't understand that, aside from the fact that the PCR test, which was the gold standard, got trashed by the CDC recently, or the fact that there isn't one study that proves the efficacy of masks. There isn't one that proves it. Or the fact that COVID has a higher survival rate than the seasonal flu. I mean, despite there being no definitive research, I just, I wanna know, who's monitoring this contact tracing? How do we ensure no mistakes are being made and a kid isn't sent home for 10 days unnecessarily? Why is this even a policy when there are now documented cases of vaccinated people still getting COVID and potentially spreading it? I wanna understand what research has been done, first and foremost, above everything else, to ensure mask mandates won't be detrimental to the emotional and psychological development, particularly in the K-5 age range? And I'm gonna quote Dr. Seth Pollock of the University of Wisconsin-Madison. "There are a lot of things that are really important for human communication, and human faces are definitely one of the most important of them. I get the fear and the uncertainty, but I expect our district to lead, as it always has, especially when it comes to protecting and educating our children." That's all I have. Thank you.
May I please have Dorothy Ashford join us? Thank you. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and your five minutes will begin.
Sure. Dorothy Ashford, 2589 Sandhurst Drive, Lewis Center. And I need to get to what I wrote. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Obviously, a divisive topic. Mr. Rafe got it right on that one, for sure. And I, you know, think we all agree with, in support of our board. We're very, I feel very grateful to be in this school district. If there are any teachers or staff here, thank you for your service. I can imagine it's been, it's not been fun. We moved here seven years ago from Los Angeles, where, as you, everyone's probably aware of the public schools there. So several of us got together and created a form of charter school. There's now three of these charter schools across the country, and they're doing pretty well. The point is, you know, we made a choice to do that, right? We weren't happy where we were, and we made a choice to change it. And that's the beauty about living in our country, right? America was founded on freedoms. The people who founded our country were fleeing from the ruling class, who was imposing their will on them. They didn't have choices. They, I mean, they came here. People come, and we see it today, the southern border, come to our country to enjoy the freedoms that we have in the U.S., namely, we're a democratic republic. So I know I'm kinda, you know, going a little off the mast. My issue with this is, again, we're not going to agree, but you didn't give us a choice. And, you know, I can't, I mean, give us a choice. Let us vote on it. That's what our, that's what our country was founded. We get to vote. And I mean, I can only imagine the pain you've been in and what you've been going through. I think you'd welcome the opportunity to put the onus on us to decide, right? You are a government body, and we have elected you to hear our voice and to carry that voice, but you didn't give us the chance. So, you know, all I would say is, we're not all gonna agree, but if we at least have, our voices are allowed to be heard, a lot of us are gonna be really happy. Some of us, a lot of us are gonna be really mad, because I'm, you know, that's just how it is, but you gave us our voice. You gave us, you gave us that right, and you honored that and respected that. And so what I'd like to ask, I'd like the board to take action tonight. And according to your board policy clause 0165 dot 1D, you're able to do this at a meeting. And I'd like to ask the board to immediately revoke the mask requirement and agree to schedule a yes-no vote on requiring masks that will allow the district parent body and stakeholders to participate in determining how it works. So I don't know what the process is for that. I know I'm not allowed to have interactions. I know they don't respond, but I know you can do it. You can change an agenda item. We want, thank you for your consideration and your...
Dr. Kevin Martin, please. Dr. Martin, would you please state your name and address for the record, and your five minutes will begin as you do so.
Sure. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for hearing our conversation this evening. So I introduce myself as Dr. Martin, not only to bring some different perspective, but also as a 23-year veteran of the United States Army.
What's your address?
It's 4265 Curve Road, Delaware. So with 23 years in the military, I've had three deployments, and my most recent to Afghanistan, where I was awarded the Bronze Star for service. And I don't say that to brag. I say that because I've dedicated my adult life to serve this country for freedom. Freedom that we deserve and freedom we have fought for. Freedom to kneel, freedom to stand, freedom. Over the past year, the committee in this school district has done great things for our diversity and for the community. We've embraced diversity and how we can include everyone at this school, went out of their way to do such things. This past week, my 14-year-old and 10-year-old were called to the principal's office, brought down in front of the principal's office, and told, "If you do not wear your mask, you're not welcome here. Do not come to school tomorrow." That happened. That happened. That happened last week. That happened last week. If you're not sure, that happened. They were brought there. No letter was sent to me. No phone call was sent to me. This happened at our school. And then we talk about resiliency. We talk about resilience, resilience, resiliency. There was no one there to talk to these children. They were actually told that if they don't change, go home. That's not freedom. And so now you replace mask with any other pronoun you wanna use, right? Boy, girl, whatever you wanna put in there, and it becomes, it's not feasible. If you were to use that pronoun for anybody else, that'd be highly inappropriate, right? So why is the masked kid asked to go home? They're segregated out and asked to leave. That's what happened this week. They're asked to leave. So the board was very quick to change their mind in just two days to mandate masks. Is the board also, now that the FDA has approved the vaccine, right? It's approved. Are you going to mandate every single employee of this facility and everybody in our district have the vaccine? Are they gonna mandate that? You can change your mind. You have 48 hours. Let's change it. My employer said, "If you don't have the vaccine, don't come to work." It was just that easy. That's what they said. So why can you pick on our kids and mandate my kid do something? But why can't you mandate your employees do something? If that's the number-one thing you wanna have, do that then, right? That's pretty easy. Mandate it. Make your employees get the vaccine then. If that's the problem, do it, right? It's just that easy. So when it's easy, it's easy to regulate and pick on the children, but when it's their own staff, it's a different story. The mandates are a little harder, right? Because they may not come to work. But we do thank you very much for serving the community, and we do appreciate you, and thank you for hearing us. And I agree with the gentleman earlier about masks. If your child wants to wear a mask, please wear a mask. If it's the answer, please wear a mask. And I agree with Dr. Fauci. Wear three. Wear an N95. You can find them online now. N95 is a couple bucks, right? If that's the truth, you know, then truly use it. It's just, I don't know. So that's all I had to say. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your consideration, I'm serious. Thank you.
We have time remaining in the half hour, so I will draw the last participation, please. Richard, I believe it's Carrico. Forgive me if I didn't pronounce it correctly. Was that right?
Carrico.
Carrico. Thank you. Forgive me. Please state...
My name is Richard Carrico. I live at 7112 Lewis Center Road, and I thank you all for the, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak for you. I've had my daughter go through this school, and right now, currently, my son Nicholas goes here. And I've been very proud, very happy with the school district up till now. And that isn't, the academics here are amazing. I can't tell you. My daughter went to college, boom, straight in, no problems at all. Can't say the same for my son. We went, we were at another school, so, but I'm, hey, you know, it is what it is. So you guys are doing pretty good, but it comes down to where, you know, here's the board, board of directors. Okay, you're the school board. People follow you. They think, they look to you. There were people in Afghanistan that looked to our president for leadership, and he failed it. Okay? That's a sad thing. It was a pretty simple decision. We do those kind of evacuations all the time. They're not a real public, but we do. You'd never believe it from what just happened. Okay? This is pretty simple, too. You know, you got up there and did this great presentation up there. If you did that where I work, you'd have been laughed out of the room. You didn't cite one thing where that data came from. You know, these masks? My son actually worked on Warp Speed, all right? And, you know, masks have their place. Masks are not the end-all-beat-all for COVID. They're not. That COVID molecule's smaller than... I don't think masks are wearing now, okay? Especially if they're dirty. I'm gonna kinda rehash that, because you heard it already. You heard it already. I mean, it's education we're here for, folks. It's education. Mr. Matilio gets up here, and he's worried about relationships and self-regulation and sense of belonging. You know, I looked online and found out that we are so far down in the list as far as education in the world. We need to work on that. Math, science, reading. Let's get that. Folks, we're not stupid. If you, if you let me report, there's a reason we're wearing masks. Right there is the proof positive reason we're wearing masks, and it works. You give anybody in this room reason, that 100% reason why we're wearing masks, there isn't a person in here that wouldn't just take that thing, "Oh, gee, then I better wear a mask." You don't have to mandate it. We're not stupid. You know, instead of worrying about what restroom the kid wants to pee in, all right? Let's get an education for them. You know, some of them can't read very well coming out of school anyway. I mean, what do they, what do these colleges want? What do they want? Do you even take the college entrances seriously? Or are you more worried about CRT? Worried about how racist our country is and then pressing them on that? Let's get the education for them, because, you know, really, our special needs program could use some work. Got some, got some real history on that one. So I'm telling you, there is more that you can spend your money on than these fluffy programs. Let's get a kid smart. Let's get some kid, I'm telling you right now, I work, the place I work, it's really bad news, and not just, I work for a Fortune 50 manufacturing company, and I'm telling you right now, the caliber of work ethic that we're giving out of these, I have a lot of kids that we get, sucks. What are you doing, what are you doing to address that? If you're gonna do it? What are you doing to get them to balance a freaking checkbook? Project management? How about, you know, you don't have to pee, you're not going to teach them, you know, self-esteem. They're gonna earn it. Give them the reason to earn it. There's not a race issue in this country. Dr. Martin Luther King says, "Judge me by the content of my character, not by the color of my skin." You look at CRT garbage that you're pushing, that's exactly what that does.
That is the end of public participation for this evening. We have gone to the separate... Okay, we are now coming out of recess, and we have the treasure action items. Yes, please. I would like to present treasure action items A through E for your approval, please.
Do I have a motion to approve A through E?
I'll move.
Any further discussion? And that does include the refunding of the over $80 million in bonds.
Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we have the superintendent action items.
Yes, ma'am. I present superintendent action items A through D for approval.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes. And now I need a motion to enter into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22G4 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees, as permitted by Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment and compensation of public employees.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second. We will now go into executive session. We will return to adjourn, but no actions will be taken. Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn? So move. Is that, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?